That'll give Chad the go ahead to get going on it.
I would make a motion that we go with the freight liner with a very minimal amount of increase pricing and we'll get a contract.
And to cover the cost of the chassis when the chassis, when it's determined what the cost is. That was, that was the second half of your motion.
Yep, I read your mind.
Uh, the freight liner, with the understanding there will be a minimal price increase of anything with the chassis and that part of his motion was that we will cover the cost of the chassis when we know the price of the chassis.
Will you put a percent or a dollar on that because what's you, minimal to you may not be minimal other residents of the community.
Well, we won't know that price until we take delivery.
Yeah, we're moving forward with this, you know what I mean?
I'm, I'm just gonna go-
But back to you, what Jason produced this for final approval is what I would think is proper. Preliminary, we can go ahead and get a contract right before we're ready. He's a pretty thoughtful person. I also guess what we're asking for and then once we make a contract in place, we'll put it back up. Okay?
I'm not sure, we have a motion, we haven't had a second yet, so I'm not sure what's okay.
What they're doing is the same thing they're doing with cars and trucks. I ordered a van here two weeks ago. They said we can't determine what your, what your trade price will until the van comes in. They're still doing the same thing on pickups. They've been doing it for a year and a half, so what they're doing is not outside of the industry. Do you have faith that they will be upright with us?
What we'll do is we'll try to minimize any increases we can and I don't feel comfortable with that.
That's the way the business is right now. I don't know that we can do anything differently, I, I think we either move forward or we don't get a truck. So, I, I think Andy's got the right motion.
Well, we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor of moving forward with the freight liner?
Aye.
Aye.
And all abstain on the grounds of I'd rather have a financial plan laid out beforehand.
Okay, opposed?
Not opposed, abstain.
So we have three and two abstain.
Three, zero, two, Andy Wells will stand, I think he's on the fire button.
Um, well, I did vote on it, I, my take is if it's not a, a wage increase, that I-
But done by you, nevermind.
Sure, you're for it, Joe.
I agree with you, Andy, that it passes.
Motion carries.
Uh, thank you to Mike and Chad, and maybe I say especially Chad, no offense, Mike, for doing all, doing all the work on the truck.
Okay, oh, business number two, golf cart lease options.
Yes, um, so attaching your packet tonight are actually a set of three quotes for sixteen golf carts. One quote is from Yamaha for a four-year lease, another quote is from Yamaha for a five-year lease, and then the third we have from NB Golf Carts for a five-year lease. I'm gonna start by saying right now that NB Golf Carts, the, the quote is much, much higher than Yamaha options, so I would suggest we don't do NB Golf, and I also suggest that we do not choose NB because those carts are available in August. Uh, the Yamaha carts are actually sitting in the lot, ready to deliver whenever, whatever you choose here.
Was there a reason you chose Yamaha like directly and then a retailer for your second sourcing of carts?
They're not, they're not, they're both wholesalers. The quote is right from Yamaha and the other one is right from, uh-
On a different brand, right? Cause I did, I was able to pull up an owner, um, from the brand that the, the third quote was from, and the pricing would be different if it wasn't through a retailer. So I was just kinda curious how you're, um, how you're pulling your quotes when you're looking at these, cause directly from the source is gonna be cheaper, right? But if you're paying the retailer, he wants to make money too. So how-
I was told that the representative, uh, that was a representative from, um, those kind of carts, so, for our area, so-
Well, cause what it looks like to me is that you just pulled a quick third quote instead of doing the preliminary work like the other heads of departments have been doing in pulling those quotes. So that's why I'm asking what your, you had did to complete this and now, like, what your product, or like, what your, um, strategy was on that.
Well, he called.
Who?
Huh?
Well, I'm just asking who are?
Yeah, I was told that the, the sales rep for club car ball was the person that I, that I thought- I asked the, the sales rep that, that I thought club car, or something like that, was giving us that.
So we're using a third-party vendor for the purchasing of golf carts?
I have no idea, that's, that's like I said, the sales rep that I was told to call for club cart, to call for, with, with, I don't-
Um, so we don't, so what have you done in previous years?
We've been with Yamaha and, you know, and I, there's three other companies that have done golf carts, so I've always checked to see which company is the best rate. And it's, you know, we've been with Yamaha for, you know, since we started because it's, it's the most feasible.
Well, it's preferred, yeah, and that's not, I mean, I'm not contesting that.
We've been really, really good with it somewhere, so we're always trying to go with what's been with the best rate, so-
Right.
So previously, we've always been with, uh, the best rate, um, so we've just kinda kept on with that. It's kind of just that we've, um, go back and forth, we're with them.
Yeah.
When we go to buy old carts, uh, that's at the end of the four years, it's really good, but wait until we sell our carts before they, you know, make us pay, um, we just gotta cruise the game with, with them.
You know, I, I appreciate all of those things, but unfortunately, when you're working with the city budget, we don't have the luxury to think about preference. We have to think about people, what they're spending, which is why we ask people to do studies on surrounding areas for vendors to provide fire trucks, police trucks, golf carts. Every other department, we're not having this issue with, but I'm just asking that next year, maybe an extra effort that we can see that visibly, because this is such a sore subject, and I'd, I'd really like to do away with it.
Yeah, but just from, in, in the past, in the golf, uh, this is common knowledge that that particular cart is more expensive cart than ours. So, I mean, that's the high end, and they are the most expensive, so we just kind of, it was, so, it was kinda shocking that, uh, that they wanted us to do it, uh, do that, because we kinda knew upfront that, yeah, we, I have no problem with going to a different company, it'll be great, it's just, you know, it's kinda, it's kinda like when we bought them, they come in, and they're, they're checking every year, they've always been higher.
I just wanna see the same effort, that's all.
And I thought, so, and tell you, that, the sales rep that I talked to was from one that I was, almost talking to, or something like that.
Okay, gotcha.
Scott, Scott, I was the one that asked for additional bits. And it had nothing to do with the Yamaha or anything. It's just coming from one vendor wasn't enough for me, and I thought we needed multiple vendors. That, my question tonight is, we have, uh, you're buying five-year-old golf carts, correct? Or releasing five-year-old golf carts?
No, they're not.
Uh-uh.
No.
No.
Mason.
It's talking, the suspension new in seventeen, new in eighteen, the wheel suspension new in eighteen. So what is that referring to then?
I'm sorry?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I see what you're saying.
On this quote, it says independent rear suspension, new in seventeen. Uh, rear panel new in seventeen.
To the building.
We have upgraded that particular part of the golf course, that's two thousand seventeen.
Okay, so we're clear on that?
It says at the top, twenty-two and a half.
Okay.
Year twenty-two and a half.
Yeah.
And then what year are the other ones? Cause that was the other question I had had too, is it doesn't have the same specs provided. This one details like the engine, fuels, um, fuel, everything, and this one just says like, we got some new ones, Temple gasoline golf carts, sixty payments at one seventy-four for sixteen cars a month.
Yeah, these would be new as well.
Okay.
Yep, they were the same gasoline with the canopy, uh, plain white, just the, you know, just the basic, exact version of Yamaha versus the basic, exact version of club cart. The only difference with the club cart was that they had pump caps on, but it was identical, you know?
Well, Scott, I appreciate you going up, getting the second bit. We asked you to get a second bit, we did not specify where you had to get the second bit from. I think you did good, thank you.
Thank you, yes.
So, do we have a preference on the four to five-year lease, Scott, or Quentin? I believe Jacob had a comment about this.
Yeah, our, our, our was four years, um, just, you know, but actually, as the cart started to get beat up, seats started to get ripped, um, we, we're trying to get a, kind of a happy medium on how many carts we're gonna lease and how many we own. And so that, once they start getting older, Jacob tries to work it on the lot, so it, uh, once they start getting a little bit beat up, so, so, on the golf course, he's spending time repairing golf carts, so it's, it was just our recommendation that, you know, four-year lease, uh, so we just put it a little bit sharper and, uh, represent the prospect.
I'll make a motion to go with the four-year lease on the Yamaha.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I, I was just gonna mention that the, the sales rep, um, I don't believe he's in the country yet. I emailed him last week and he was kind of on extended vacation, so when he's back, I'm sure we'll just get, get in touch with him.
True.
Make sense?
Yes, and it, just to reiterate what we talked about last week, the lease payment actually is cheaper than our previous one with one more cart.
Yep.
Good, Andrew? Okay? Upcoming, upcoming city code amendment.
All right, I wanna just begin by just saying a couple things here quick before we get into these. Uh, tonight we have our first reading of the various amendments that we are suggesting the council to adopt. We will have our final second reading, our public hearing, in March, we'll set that date tonight. Once we have that public hearing and whatever is approved, we need to publish the notice in the newspaper, the summary notice is called. Once it's published in the newspaper, then it's official. I think there is maybe a little confusion with a few folks here within the last few weeks, thinking that if you make a motion to amend the city code at the council meeting, it becomes official immediately that night. It does not, it has to be published in the newspaper. Okay? So, having said that, I'm gonna put this sheet on the screen, and I'm gonna basically just go over the first seven to start with. There were minor changes that we made to various chapters in our city code, and then when we're done with that, the eighth item would be our cannabis, the THC ordinance, and we can probably get a little more in depth on that because that's a brand-new ordinance, obviously. So item number one, um, you have all these in your packet, if you, if you look at the words that are crossed out, that's what we're removing, and you look at the words that are underlined, that's what we suggest to, to add into the chapter. So the first one is, uh, relates to the garbage chapter, chapter fifty. We need to amend the ordinance to reflect how we currently charge residents for the service. And as we talked with Waste Management here a couple meetings ago, we are gonna change the language in the city code and in the contract with Waste Management that says that they will charge directly for recycling. On item number two, the amusements chapter, that specifically talked about gambling, the hours of gambling, we had specific hours in there that you can have your gambling operation. We are taking that out and we're simply saying that the gambling hours will remain, or will be reflective of state statutes. Uh, the mobile, I'm sorry, the mobile food vendor, chapter one fourteen, there's a couple minor changes in that. Basically, the changes are gonna call for the fact that if there's any mobile food vendor on private property, you know, and they're not using the credit card machines or things like that, they're doing cash only, if they're on private property, they, or if it's part of payday, they must submit an application, they must submit a background check and a background check fee, but they will not be charged the licensing fee. They have to pay the background check fee though, cause no matter what, wherever, anything is in city limits, we are gonna require a background check for these things.
Is that done on an annual basis or a one-time?
Uh, the background checks last twelve months. Yep, good question.
Um, referring to if somebody has a food vendor for graduation.
Yes.
Where do they fall in that?
They would be the, that's, I'm glad you asked that, cause-
On private property.
Yep, yep.
On private property, they don't need the license, but they would have to pay for the background.
Correct, that's right. They get the license, right, they just don't pay the license fee. You are exempt from license fee. Cause once you pass your background, they just give you the license.
If you're parked on the street, it must not consider private property. Then you would pay for the license only.
Uh, the fourth item, recreational vehicles, specifically campers, we had, um, a couple instances here where our ordinance right now says that you can have the recreational vehicle parked on the road as long as you are actively loading or unloading it. We're gonna change that to a, you can have it parked on the road or a public driveway, a maximum of forty-eight hours. We've seen a couple instances where a camper was parked on Sunday night in front of the house, and it was parked there all week cause they were going back out on Saturday, and they said, well, we're actively loading it and cleaning it, and, well. There's an ordinance in town that says you can't do that, so we're just making that more clear. Item number five, the corner lot exception, if you own, if you own a property, you have a corner lot, two corner lots, and you have a camper, you can park on, you can park it on an impervious surface on the nine, non-primary front yard of your corner lot.
With regard to this ordinance, uh, I'm reading, uh, on page two, section C, uh, item two, paragraph A, vehicles parked in front or side of the yards must be on a paved or gravel surface, road or driveway. Half the homes between my house and here aren't paved completely. Um, in the winter, we require them not to park on the street, we have to give them someplace they can park. You know, we're trying to get them off the backyard and, uh, off the side yards.
We don't have to give them someplace to park their recreational, yeah, that's what it is, thank you.
Yeah, if, this paragraph just says vehicles.
Well, it does, but this particular chapter references-
He's correct, I, I remember-
Recreational vehicles, right?
Yeah, I remember we had this in a council meeting not long ago, and that particular phrasing was brought up.
Home materials, machinery, vehicles, and equipped.
So we're looking to change the verbiage on that, or?
I'm not the lawyer.
Well, what's the, what is your question, I can say?
I think he's concerned that the way on page two, uh, C two eighty is written, that any vehicle that is stored, it has to be placed on a paved or gravel surface. He's saying, I think it would be more risk that, you know, among every park, like, paved by a gravel, paved surface.
Yep.
Seven, seven?
Yep.
This came about when we had multiple complaints of campers and RVs that were being stored in parts in front yards.
That's, yep.
So, the gravel or paved surface came with to correct that, and there was an influx. But this also just relates to recreational vehicles, general vehicles, that's what chapter you under correct.
Well, we're on nuisance parking and storage.
I thought we were still talking about recreational vehicles.
Dave, you're the person that has to enforce these laws, are you seeing this as an issue? Any of this?
On time, it has been in the past, yeah. I have a lot of complaints about, you know, people parking their, their campers on the grass, causing problems about, you know, the grass weeds growing up around it, not being taken care of or whatnot. So, there's quite a few residents who comply with the requirement of having a cement or gravel platform or area of, of RV, RVs.
My concern comes where there's no ordinance says you can't park in the streets, and now we're saying you can't park in any area. It's got a conflict of, or conflict going on there.
I think this is kinda the same tricky situation anyone would come into when they purchase a boat or a pontoon is where to store it. I think that that is something to weigh out when you purchase the recreational vehicle, or trailer unfortunately. Um, taking into consideration your city's ordinances is one of those factors. This particular ordinance, that verbiage is pretty much everywhere. Um, the one thing that I would like to see personally added to the recreational vehicles chapter would be that it can, cause it, it speaks about not blocking any public ways or something like that. And I know personally, there was a bunch of these recreational vehicles parked, so you couldn't go in the sidewalk. You had to like walk around it, go in a driveway, that would be, my only ask is that it is inclusive of sidewalks and trails.
Yeah, and actually, in a different part of our ordinance, there is a, you, it is against ordinance to park across the sidewalk.
Oh, well, then there we go, it's already handled.
Mike?
We do another ordinance that deals with the weeds and long grass already, we need just to deal with the same thing.
Uh-uh.
In the interest of moving the meeting along, I'm willing to, uh, drop discussion on this item for now. We're going through with the amendment, I mean, it was time to discuss it, it's happened.
But this isn't an amendment, this is original language, you need to question the other ones.
Well, we're gonna change the language. I, I don't have a good solution to it, so.
Jason?
Yeah, you know, we've got the next thirty days to think about it, so I've got it marked on my sheet here to take a look at. The next second, we'll force the next thirty days, we'll re-group, we'll change it then.
Okay.
So I'll mark it on mine, see if we can, if we can, where, where we can come up with it.
Okay. Quentin, number six, William Brown, Groundwater Connection.
Yes. Uh, a couple meetings ago, this was, this was introduced as an idea to add the paragraph of requiring inspections to be done on the, on these properties, so, so this was, this was in the council packet a couple meetings ago. Um, the seventh item basically is a suggestion from the park board. Right now, currently, the city code does not allow golf carts to be driven on trails or in parks, and the park board is suggesting that we allow that to take place. There's a trail that runs from, from nursing home to Lakeview Park, and golf carts drive on that trail, so we, we should allow it. Right, so we're just gonna cross those out in the, in the ordinance. Um, and then last but not least is the, the cannabis, the THC ordinance. Um, any questions about the previous seven?
The golf carts, they're, they're a big movement to have them driving on the trails and parks? Or is this just common?
The, from the park board?
Yeah.
Well, we were just going through the golf cart, or the park, use of park ordinance, and, uh, we just brought up the golf cart, well, we wrote that ordinance before golf carts were, I mean, they were only used for golfers, now they're kinda used for-
Right, everywhere.
And I would do a disc golf, a park.
Right.
Plus, the, the park board was also looking at another possibility, they like to pursue entertainment in the city park, having the pavilion there, and some people would like to, if they're not terribly mobile, to bring their golf cart and park in that park to watch the entertainment. That was a, a second portion of this, and I think that's a very viable idea.
So amending it so we can use them, that makes sense.
Yes, those two items were the main emphasis for changing this.
That makes sense, then.
I think Ron had the question.
Yeah, I've got a question on, uh, who's, who's actually okay to golf, I, excuse me, drive a golf cart?
What?
They have to be a licensed individual.
Yeah, they need a permit.
Licensed, insured.
Motor vehicle law still applies, right?
What we're doing is we've got kids running around, five and six-years-old driver.
Contestable.
Call Dave, call Dave.
We're having these ordinances, and it seems like it's, it's considered responsible for us.
Yeah, call Dave.
Yeah, call Dave, that's, he'll be hap, he'll be happy to take care of it.
Yeah.
So they have to have a driver's license.
Yeah.
Yes, you have to have a permanent.
And insurance?
Yep, yep, slow-moving.
Drive in any place other than your own property, you need to have a, a license, a permit from the city.
Is, is, is S and B sign required also?
Yep.
Do you guys actually issue decals? Would you be interested in doing, cause I could set you up with a vendor that'll make the decal kinda like the-
Make it easier for you guys.
D and R, I think, I think.
Right, that'd probably make life a lot easier.
I can set you up with a vendor that'll give you those decals, so it's easier.
Do it to it.
And basically, it's just like a D and R sticker, I put a year.
Mine has a USMC sticker, pepper fired.
Oh, my God.
How many of those permits do we give a year?
What's that?
They don't expire. No, they do not.
They do not.
Give me your day.
You can read, I always read.
They register them hand only.
As soon as you said it, I was just like, oh.
We, I mean, we post it a lot, and I feel like when it's posted, more and more come in, but not everyone does it, but. You're supposed to be driving on the street.
Right, I was curious, how many do you give out versus? Now, when you're on the streets.
I actually have thirty.
You give out thirty?
Give or take.
Any other questions on the first seven?
Fortunately, this is stuff that you guys already do, it's just hard to clean.
Fine-tuning some language in.
If we're gonna clean one up, we might as well clean the other.
Yep.
It's the best fine tuning. Again, tonight's just the first reading, it'll be your public hearing next month, we can set that tonight, and we'll hold the public hearing the rest of next month.
Yes. Okay, and the eighth item, the cannabis, the THC ordinance, I'm gonna put this summary here, Jason put this together. Uh, Jason and I worked on, we reviewed, what, four or five different communities?
Ordinances.
Well, probably more than that, ordinances.
I think I reviewed most of the thirty.
Yeah. Um, we have a seven-page ordinance here- Yeah. We have a seven-page ordinance here. The twelve items on your screen is a good summary of what this ordinance includes. We reference state law. And I want to begin by saying, we're looking at this chapter as, in licensing, as the same similar process as liquor licensing that we do in Janesville. The very beginning of our liquor license chapter, 110, it states that this chapter will, you know, flow with existing state statutes on liquor. So we're gonna do that the same with this, because we know the statutes are gonna change already. It's already been through many amendment processes. Basically, the police department will do the background check, the same as our intoxicating liquor chapter. We have paperwork that the police department uses for liquor. We can update that a little bit and make changes to it for THC. We would license six licenses in city limits.
How come you picked six?
Because there's presently six places that could probably be eligible to do it.
Is there a reason you need a cap?
There's no reason, I guess.
And you guys, we have alcohol cap too?
There's no cap on alcohol, no.
Why would cap in this one?
We don't have to.
Let's, if everyone's okay with it, then strike it if it's unnecessary.
Is council okay with that? That we take that out?
I have to ruffle that.
Yeah, I'm in development.
It is a fun word to say.
Okay.
Are other cities capping?
Most other cities aren't even asking anything like this. Most other cities are just gonna, let me give you the fifteen minute version of things. Marijuana's gonna be legal. Prepare yourself for it. It's on its way. What you're doing here tonight is likely going to be completely irrelevant in six months, maybe, maybe a year, certainly in the next eighteen months. There are various bills proceeding through the House and Senate committees that, they're about halfway through, let's just say that. And so what you're doing here tonight is essentially gonna be nullified in a matter of months. You have the moratorium in place. You can't sell this low-level stuff in Janesville right now. You certainly can't take the time to pass something like this, but to be quite honest with you, you're gonna throw this out in six months. So you even question the utility of having this.
Well, we could have questioned the utility of the moratorium too in the first place. We had the-
Moratorium's a good thing.
That's opinion, and you know that.
That's my opinion.
Right.
And I think that would be the opinion of your first responders and your law enforcement that are gonna have to deal with this.
No, that's, no, that's not what we're saying here. If we're gonna say that the, I didn't, I didn't.
I'm gonna give you my opinion.
Want it or not.
That's right. And so-
But the problem that I'm finding in your opinion is that you're including it of a lot of different people. Like you individually, great. Let's stick with that and I'll stick with mine too. I think that's where we can agree, right?
We can agree on that, and we can agree that this is gonna be completely irrelevant in six months. So why even do this?
Interesting.
I guess we could counter with why we started it in the first place. The state level was there, the requirements were there, the moratorium just seized everything. It was on a thing that we didn't know. I asked for a study to be done so that way we were more progressive in our battling of the inevitable, as you said.
Well, if you guys want to pass this tonight, you certainly can. Or if you can certainly do this in the first reading. We'll have the second reading next month, but I guarantee you that this is gonna be a complete waste of time when the new bill comes out.
Well, you put the time into doing it, so let's go through it.
Yeah, let's at least finish our journey.
Yeah.
We got to the end of the journey and the whole room's empty, we don't know where we're going.
So if and when marijuana becomes legal, do we have to go through this entire process again?
Marijuana's legal.
It's very possible that you will have to in some way. The current bill that's proceeding through is pretty much gonna take your ability to regulate it out of your hands. You'll be able to regulate it somewhat like alcohol, but the state is pretty much gonna tell the communities what you get to follow. For instance, one of the provisions is that the state will actually license dispensaries in places that sell it, so the cities will not be able to do that.
Sure.
The state will do that. And the state will set the fee and then also set some of the parameters. For instance, it can't be sold in one over twenty-one. And the dispensary, one of the bills right now, at least the one I seen yesterday, you can't sell within a thousand feet of a park, or a church, or a school. But you take those parameters and you draw a thousand feet, there are many places in Janesville that would fall outside of that one thousand feet. Is that one thousand feet going to be the rule? I don't know, but it's in the current bill right now for a thousand feet. This bill, this ordinance that I drafted has five hundred feet.
Yep, number six, yep.
So who knows, who knows what that final bill is gonna be? We know it's gonna be legal. We know it's probably gonna be six months, six to twelve months away. So again.
Why would the legalization-
New York has legalized marijuana.
Why would the legalization of that have anything to, why would that null and void all of this, though? The increasing of the legalization of THC, why would that null and void all of this?
Because five hundred's going to become a thousand, because when we-
So should we null and void traffic laws? That might be changing too, because it might as well, because in a year it might change. Do you see? No, I think the thing is, though, is we're sitting there with all this fear and scared over a simple product. It's already there, it's been legal. We look like we have mud on our face when we're trying to say things about a product we clearly have not spent time individually looking into.
Well, that's your own problem. We, Quentin and I have what-
I understand that.
And I can tell you that this is gonna be no good in six months.
And I'm not contesting that. I'm not at all.
I don't care if you are or not. I'm just telling you that in six months, this is gonna be no good. We won't issue the license. The state will issue.
Apply that same logic to every other state law that could predictably change in the next twelve years, Jason. That logic doesn't work.
You should issue the state license.
No, that logic is not safe to sit there and have, well, we might as well just keep restricting everything because maybe it'll change.
You know, a good example too, if the state does go through this whole process of doing the licensing-
Yes, I can hear all of you talking while I speak.
Another good example would be if the state law does change, the police department would not be responsible for the background check anymore. It would be the state. So then the two or three paragraphs that refer to police background checks, Janesville, that would just be crossed out, so.
So we just have to go with the times and make changes as things change, like we always have, correct?
That's fine.
These aren't impossible things to do, and I really just don't understand the intense pushback. Not one member of council has-
I'm telling you, I am not pushing anything back on this.
I'm not, I'm not talking about you.
Okay, I researched the hell out of this all over.
And I've appreciated it every step of the way. My only question for you that I'll ask then is gonna be on the ineligibility and basis for denial of license. Item number three says, "If the applicant has been convicted within the past five years for any violation of a federal, state, or local law, other ordinance provision, or other regulation relating to licensed products, any prior controlled subject or substance convictions within ten years of application shall additionally act as a disqualifier." This language I personally don't like as they are talking about decriminalizing marijuana use as well. And this specific line item could potentially hinder applicants. I just wonder if this is needed in there, or if we can maybe change the language a bit that might accommodate the incoming decriminalization of marijuana use.
It really can't, because that's something out of law.
No, it's not. Well, I mean, in very many ways, but we don't have the same language as the Minnesota state law for DWI's. You can still obtain a liquor license under Minnesota state law.
Alcohol, you cheat.
Right, but we're saying that we're structuring this based off of the alcohol regulations, but we're not.
I'm not saying that at all. What I'm saying is, this is right out of Minnesota law. These regulations come from section-
Which statute is that one?
151.72.
Isn't this the one that we are creating?
No, this, this is state law. Look at it before you right now, it's state law.
City of Janesville, Waseca County, Minnesota ordinance number, and then it goes into ineligibility and basis for denial under the Janesville ordinance.
These are the same characters, but the state law. We have to follow state law.
No one's contesting that. I was asking if the wording had to be that.
It does, because that's state law.
Can you explain why it's state law, specific just to THC and alcohol then?
The legislature did that. I didn't do that. People that were asked to, 151.72. And much of that is in the current marijuana bill, it's circulated through committees right now. Can't have been previously convicted of a drug offense and sell legal marijuana.
It's very well understood that you're very disgruntled about this specific topic.
I'm not at all disgruntled.
Like you have made it very well known.
Well, I appreciate you telling people what my opinion is, but that is not my opinion. I actually think it should be legal. It's your body. You can do it the way you want, but you have to follow state law.
I don't remember anyone on this council saying otherwise.
So if we follow, if we go through what this has written, and the state comes in in six to eighteen months and implements there, you know, this, I mean, we did all we could do. Now it'll be taken out of our hands, so.
That's not correct. No, 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 no. This allows the sale of it to continue in Janesville while the legislature inevitably argues about this for another year. That's a year. You're preventing it in your own town. That's what we're doing here.
Yeah.
We are gonna have to go back to the drawing board in six months, and who cares if we have to?
I understand that.
Mm-hmm.
So if we-
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor, that we table this until our next regularly scheduled meeting, or we're gonna close the meeting out for tonight. We're approaching two hours and nothing good happens that late in the evening.
We do have to announce the public hearing, though, for all items.
Only if we pass this.
But I'm not, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about all the other items.
We have a motion on the floor to table this. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both?
Aye.
We're telling them?
I voted in favor of tabled.
New business number-
Okay, stop. We have to announce our public hearing for the other ordinances, the other amendment items.
They got tabled just long ago. We didn't pass that today.
No.
We didn't pass any of them.
We didn't pass anything tonight, guys. Remember I said earlier, this is our first reading of two. Tonight, we have to announce when we're having our public hearing. We have to do that. So should we do it at the, I'm looking behind you there, Jim. Should we do the March thirteenth council meeting, March twenty-seventh council meeting?
March twenty-seventh, I would say, since we're still in the process.
So what, in the original motion, what are we tabling then?
The discussion of Old Business Number Three this evening. We're tabling it so we can discuss it again.
All the words that's changed are listed there.
The discussion of-
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven?
Is that what you said?
March twenty-seventh.
March twenty-seventh.
March twenty-seventh or February twenty-seventh?
I heard March.
Okay.
And then we would normally have our public hearings at seven PM when the meeting begins, so, March twenty-seventh, seven PM.
And can I please get clarification? I've been made a motion for a second.
I did.
Listen, right.
All in favor or opposed?
Both.
Three and two.
Three and two.
I was.
Do you have an adding? New business number one, the park board appointment.
There's an opening on the park board, has been for a while. Brian Murphy, who lives in Janesville, has said that he would serve the remainder of this year on that park board. So if you could adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three, number four, we will put Brian on the board and I will call him and let him know.
Someone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
New business number two, R and B.
The utility commission discussed this tonight, and they went ahead with, moved forward with the recommendation. I'm gonna give you a brief description of what this is. Nate and Andrew and I have been talking for a while about the need to update our job description system, our classification system, to a certain extent, our compensation system. We need to have a second set of eyes come in and just look at how everything is organized within the city and how we do everything. The last time we did this was in two thousand, so it was a very long time ago.
This is for the whole city?
This is for the utility and the city.
The utility and the-
And the city and the guys, not the nursing home, let's put it that way.
Right.
Yep.
Not part of- Cost share project.
Yep. It's a cost share project. The utility, the utility commission would cover this first year expense. And then if we do choose David Drowden Associates, who we are recommending, they will charge us. They will come here over the next three years and look at a third of the jobs each year just to make sure that we're on track with what we decided to do this year, and we will budget for that. The city will budget for that. It's a fifty-fifty cost share over the next four years. Andrea, Andy, you were at the utility commission meeting?
Yes.
Basically, as much needed, we're gonna have an outside set of eyes look at all job descriptions, and it's gonna be key. They're gonna be interviewing employees. They're gonna sit down with employees to get their input as well.
Do you need a motion for that? Is that what we're looking for?
We are looking for a motion to-
To go with the-
David Drowden Associates. Sheila, I'll call Joe tomorrow.
I'll make a motion to approve the services of David Drowns.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Date of the law, yep.
Motion to approve?
To adjourn?
To adjourn. Er. David? Getting too late?
Aye.
Andy?
Second. All in favor?
Aye. I'd like to take a minute to thank everybody for coming and apologize for my part in making the meeting extra long tonight.